Okay, I think it's, is it 6:10?
Yeah.
All right. I'd like to call our regular meeting, March meeting of the Norfolk Board of Education to order at 6:10 on March 7. First on our agenda is public comments. I don't believe we have anyone here to comment. No, okay. But nonetheless, I will recite our little public comment statements. The Norfolk Board of Education welcomes public comments. We really do love to hear from people. We only ask that people limit their comments to five minutes and know that it is our policy not to address public comments right at that moment, but that someone will always follow up with you when appropriate. Okay. Moving on to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 16.
I approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 16, 2021.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion made and seconded to approve the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
And abstention? Donna abstains because she wasn't present here. But the motion cares. Thank you very much. Next, some of the comments. There's no correspondence of note that I needed to bring to the board, so we will move on to the superintendent's report.
All right, so what we just wanted to get is can usually be any questions about the bill's for review? So, how much you on the budget by your test? Why did we, oh, we were, what I would have been said. What you said about?
Because we were first hired, we had to work higher, we hired her on.
When she was hired, she was hired as a substitute, so that's that salary. She's now a bona fide. Virginia, could I do this? Bona fide, but it was so. When we hired her, we weren't able to hire her officially as a substitute. We were able to hire her as a substitute. So, we were paying her salary and went over that stuff list. But she's now a regular, our school nurse and paid on the point.
So, just because it's loud in here and because I think I'm probably closest to the microphone, I just, I'm gonna try my best to restate that as accurately as possible, but you can correct me. Oh, now it's quieted. But basically Donna had asked about the line for the substitute, was it substitute nurse line? That's higher than it usually is in reasoning because when we first started with the nurse that's working with us now, we hired her as a substitute and then she's now been converted into the regular position. Is that, that's correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then I wanted to share with you that it came to my attention and I'm really happy to hear that Region 7, the seventh grade class, we sent 10 of our students to read and nine out of the 10 students made honor roll either first quarter, second quarter, or both quarters. So, I thought it was quite nice.
Really good. That's great.
And then the other really exciting news is that we have set up two clinics with according to health district. So, on Friday, every one of our staff members who wants to be vaccinated will get their first vaccine and on April 2nd, four weeks later, they will all guaranteed their second vaccine. So, as of April 2nd, we will have a staff that has been vaccinated and the guidelines are saying now that if a teacher has had an employee in school that's had a both vaccine and then they have close contact, they do not have to quarantine. So, we will not have to worry about closing classes down or going to the mall because you don't have the adults in our classroom. We're very, very happy about that and across the board, across the corner, the numbers are looking better and better. We are back in the yellow, we were in the red for a while and I believe all of, most if not all of our regional schools are all back in the yellow. So, things are looking good. I think the light is at the end of the tunnel and I'm hoping that all of you are gonna be able to get your vaccines similar to the latest you already have.
Is it just teachers who get vaccinated? How about staff?
Everybody, the people in the school, the food service provider, the stadium, the staff, all of our paras.
Volunteers.
Volunteers that are, you know, regular volunteers, you know, in the building. So, Richard would be on that list, so, yeah.
What if we vaccinated PTO members? Could we have PTO events?
They wouldn't be eligible under this category, so, you know, it would be nice if we could include them until they reach the age or the whatever qualifications to get vaccinated. But once they're all vaccinated, then we can have them in the building again, sure.
Okay, well, it's coming. That's good.
I don't have any other earth-shaking news to report to. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I think we're all set to move on. Principals' report. Thank you, Mary Beth. Principals' report.
Well, it's been a short time since we were last together and not much has happened. We are celebrating Read Across America this week and have activities planned for each day. Monday was Cozy Reading Day. Tuesday was Decorator Door with, you know, favorite books. Tomorrow is Guest Reader Day, so that's a lot of fun. PTO Spirit Week is coming up in two weeks, which we're looking forward to. And other than that, we're, you know, happy to be here in person. So, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'm happy it went well. You didn't have any feedback about the menu of the Dr. Seuss?
No.
Good. Okay. Bye. Terrific.
I'd like to make a comment for both of you. I want to thank you for putting the sandwich board with no U-turns up on the class. Because it seemed to have curbed the U-turning habits of people.
Oh, yes.
Much safer, especially with all the snow and everything else. Drop off and pickup is going much better.
Thank you. Excuse me. Let me tell you, I agree and I'm not opposed to it at all. But I drove in today and I had a box and some things to bring in. So, I usually do make a U-turn there because I want to get into the handicap and easier for me to get out at night. There was no sign there when I made my U-turn. It is fallen down, it is on the ground and until I got out of my car, I did not realize it said, "No U-turn." So, I was guilty.
Well, I think it's only during drop-off, right?
Right.
So, you did nothing wrong. Oh, okay. I think it fell down because the wind didn't very bad.
Yeah, oh, I'm sure, right. But please don't think I did that intentionally because I never saw it.
But it was, it was an ongoing issue from August, September until.
Oh, I'm sure. I understand completely.
People turning around, it was very unsafe and there's little children that you can't see when you're turning around, so.
It's like Winston used to be, I used to call it the U-turn capital of the world. For years, they did nothing every 10 feet, but do a U-turn.
I did that today and I said.
Yeah, see?
I thought you were like allowed to because of the way the.
Well, they are the way it is now, but when I made it before, for many years, you know, I'm an old bat, for many years when we didn't have all those lines and the three things on here, people were doing it regardless, so, you know.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. If there's no questions for Warren, we will move on to our committee reports. I think those are gonna be pretty light today, too. So, let's, um, I believe. Curriculum and technology, met today?
We did and we had a very productive and cheerful meeting and we basically discussed the, the current state of the math program and it seems to be encouraging everybody's, everybody's interest in math and children are reporting that they like it and they enjoy participating. And so, it's called illustrative math and this is a, we're still in a beta version. This is a pilot, will be probably extending that pilot again next year and making sure that it is, it is able to perform the way it appears to be able to perform. But this is a year that collecting data is gonna be challenging. We'll also have two years of smarter balance testing to look at, so we'll be able to get a data set to let us know whether there really is improvement or whether everybody just likes it better. Often those things go hand in hand. Next year, they are going to, we're gonna bring the, if it works, if it's expected to, it will be brought to the board as a potential curriculum to be adopted by the school, for the school for the next, as Mary Beth said, for the foreseeable future. So, we'll see how that goes. Otherwise, literacy is moving forward. Let's see. Kids are learning to write about reading, developing comprehension, working on self-assessment tools. They're, they're using a pair and share kind of technique to work on increasing critical thinking called glow and grow. And initially, there was some, there was some interest in the fact that possibly peer tutoring is not necessarily the best way of encouraging children to develop critical thinking, but in fact, once you have a structure in place and they know exactly what they're looking for and how to support one another, it actually has a very powerful effect. Let's see. The parents who were present spoke highly of the response of their children. Technology, the Chromebooks have arrived for the upper elementary kids. The primary kids are still working with their iPads, but everyone is working on new and useful technology apps and that sort of thing. There was a mention of a possible new component, but we'll wait on that. And the sixth grade trip is still being planned and those details will be, will be worked out as the, as the months progress.
Excellent.
You were there. How was that?
I know, it was fantastic. It was perfect.
Do you know what, can I just ask a question? Do you know where the trip is going to be when you say the details haven't been worked out?
Oh, they're, yes, they know they're gonna do, what is it? Oshie, Osh.
Point, yeah, we're gonna go to the UConn at Requiem campus and they have a program that are called Project Oceanology. So, they'll be able to do some scientific work on a boat in Long Island Sound, participate in some labs in the building and then do some field work on the shore.
Great.
Yep.
Good.
That's the goal.
Good. Hope that it works, you know.
We all.
We all know, you know. We don't know. That's very definitely.
And of course, the sixth grade is accepting donations to help support their trip, so.
Are you sending a letter out or anything?
Yes, I actually just got it from Ann.
Okay, to parents, I mean, why don't you send me a, are you sending board members a letter to?
I was gonna send it to local businesses, to.
Yes, right.
Board members, to the project.
Absolutely. The more, absolutely. But certainly all the board members.
And if you want to adjust it and let you know more details.
Yeah.
Anyway. Okay.
And if you don't, just remind me.
I will. I'll send you a personalized.
Personalized, maybe actually in the mail.
Right. Okay, so, that's great. Thank you very much, Gordon. Finance, John, you wanna tell us how things are going with our budget?
So, the finance committee has not met since the extra regular meeting that we have on March 16th, but we have sent the budget that we approved at that meeting to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance and they've received them and distributed them. And so far, the, they seem to like the fact that the increase was only 0.67% because they were, they were expecting close to a, over a 2% increase. So, they were, they were very happy to see it.
Good.
The Board of Finance is already aware of most of the major increases that we have in our budget, so he understands them and we will officially present it to the board at the meeting next Tuesday night, the 9th, at 7:30. But they anticipated getting a swift presentation, so they can off to the more important fiber-optic discussion.
Great, thank you.
The more lengthy fiber-optic.
That's great. And I wanted to say, I just wanna say aloud that I feel like the budget process has gone really, really well, so thank you to everybody here. And I'm really happy that our relationship with the Board of Finance is going so well and really, you know, I'm so happy to have such a positive relationship. I mean, we got nice notes back from both the Chairman of the Board of Finance and the Selectmen saying, you know, thank you for the budget and appreciative of how, how hard we worked to keep it at a minimum. So, that was very, that was really very nice. So, good job.
Well, it was a group effort and really, I was the most enjoyable, you know, process in a long time, so I really appreciate it. And I think it's huge that it's so obvious that there's great board engagement in this process. I think that means a lot to the Board of Finance and to the Selectmen. I think it adds a lot of credibility, so I really, you know, kudos to you folks for participating at this level. And John, is there anything that you need from us for the 9th? Any, I know you're presenting it, but I don't wanna just.
I can't think of anything. Yeah. It was something I thought of earlier, but it was a pretty minor thing. I'll think of it.
All right, I'll holler at the center when we can move.
So, the Board of Finance meetings are Zoom, are on Zoom, like ours, you can, you can join them. And I really encourage everyone to join, I think especially that one. It's nice to, for the Board of Ed members to be there, to hear what's happening. The fiber-optic discussions are very interesting, too, so you get the extra bonus of being there for that piece.
Those prices went up, didn't they? Why?
So, I think that that Zoom meeting link, well, if anybody needs it, maybe I'll try to remember to send it to our, to, out to my email, to everybody.
That would be great.
But if.
It's, now, the numbers, at least, I don't know.
Right, it's a little hard to get to because it's posted on the town website under the Board of Finance agenda, but it's a PDF that you're looking at, so it's not a link that you could click.
Right, so.
Write it down or.
Maybe if I type it, I can get it to.
Have different devices, yeah.
I was gonna ask, I was actually gonna email Jen Ryan, the secretary, and ask if they could put the actual link somewhere instead of, or have it embedded, the link embedded in the PDF, because you can't save the PDF with the link.
Right.
Instead of having to type it, because a lot of us last, for fiber-optics meeting had a hard time.
Relate, yeah.
Because you have to type it in. If you're on a mobile device, typing it in is not easy.
Well, there was actually confusion because the host got switched to the person presenting and.
Right, to Kim, yeah.
He was presenting.
So, I don't see you folks on the distribution list, Ann, except for Ann. Jennifer Ryan did send an email with the embedded link and I can send that to all of you.
Yes, please. Is it an active link, though? I think it's, it looks like it's a photo that is made into a PDF rather than like a Word document that's printed to PDF, which is just a slight difference. But the difference is that you can't then access the text, so you can't like click. But that said, we'll get those details figured out. I'll send you guys a link. I'll figure out a way to send you a link. I'll type it carefully. Typing, not my best skill, I have to admit, but I will type it carefully and I'll send it to you.
Can't you all then just click on the link in the email?
Is there a link in the email?
It is, I'm gonna send it to you all right now.
Okay, perfect. Great, okay. Okay, moving on to, I can't imagine Policy has met, right?
We did not.
Okay. How, do you have them all to meet this morning? Well, we're supposed to meet tomorrow morning, I think. Are our meetings on Wednesdays, not Tuesdays?
But Wednesday changed that because it's always been on Tuesdays and that's what we have on the schedule. So, I'm happy to change it, but Captain, I just want to know if we should officially change it or if it had been informally changed temporarily?
I thought we both, we like mentioned it in one of the meetings when we did this whole schedule because of Keon and Keon's and Lauren's schedules, that it's Wednesday. Yeah?
And we'll change it.
I'm sorry. I will do that, though. And it's still will be 8:45 because it used to be in the afternoon, correct?
Right, yes.
Okay, so then we went to Wednesday mornings? Okay.
Okay.
So, I will change that and make the Wednesday.
All right, so we'll talk to you next month. And our, we haven't had a Sunday Tuesday yet. And, okay, so we're on to shared services.
This shared, this shared services meeting, I think, had a record for being the shortest meeting I have ever been in. It was less than 11 minutes from start to finish. Basically, Judy wasn't there and Q just gave his report. He said, "There's nothing new. Everything is good." They've had two minor pair changes because the pairs have been coming and going. That Regional is starting full kids, full-time face-to-face on March 5th. The transportation, the transportation funding is down. He's wondering how that's going to impact revenue next year, so probably they're not going to get a new van, instead of two new vans, which was their hope. He's not budgeting for it, but he has a reserve just in case he needs it. Let's see, the budget is drafted and that will be presented on the, on the 15th of March and he will send us all a summary, but their, their expectation is that their request is gonna be below 3% as, and that his promises remain true. That was that.
Very efficient.
Yeah, they're still like, blindly efficient.
Great, that's fantastic. Thank you. For the, the PTO did meet last night by Zoom and talked about upcoming Spirit Week and plans coming for a theater program with Bruce Connolly and for how we might be able to make a talent show this year and how things might work out. We also did talk about the Brick fundraiser and are working on getting the Brick fundraising website up, so to submit some paperwork with them and then that will start. But that said, The Garden also talked about other things that they may need and talked about a shed being a really valuable extra that's.
So, we need to raise more money. Is that the bottom line of what you're saying?
I feel like we always need to raise more money, so I think that's always a safe bottom, fixture bottom line. But anyway, I just thought I could because, because we had talked about it last time, I just wanted to give a little update about that, but there's still, still plans to come. Gardening is, I know that gardeners are starting to chomp at the bit before when the snow melts and everybody starts to get out there, but we still have a little time left here.
We need to do a lot of marketing for that event.
Yeah.
In order to do, now, one of the things later in the new business I was gonna talk about was Norfolk and the history and I had some old things to show you, but I wonder if now might be the time to show you a couple of things that I found around the area and I don't know that anybody would be interested, they're just ideas. But, for instance, our neighboring town, Coburg, does a little thing like this, should they sell. If we could have Botel School made in that, or maybe one of our older schools. These are just, just other, you know. Now, the other day, I was in Sharon, coming back from Sharon Hospital where I got my shot and they've got a whole series, very interesting, a dozen different objects of things. Now, here's an example. Now, I bought this one to, not just to show you, but I have a daughter that lives in Heartland, a year-old territory in West Heartland, and West Heartland and Heartland is the Moose capital of Connecticut. Now, I know you're all interested in that, but these are kind of fun, you know, to have, to do, you know.
Some.
Something, some Norfolk apparatus, you know. Now, this one could be a school, it could be the Village Green, it could be, but they're awesome. This is for Sharon, because I got it. But do you think something like that we could market and sell here?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see why not. Seems like you could, you guys like this.
I have the name. That's a family-owned pharmacy there and they gave me the name of the buyer and I wondered if.
So, where do they, I mean, this is something, I mean, for the PTO? You're thinking of a PTO fundraiser?
Yeah, I was thinking of PTO, even that.
Spaghetti sauce.
Or they had a pouch and then we're not doing spaghetti sauce. I, we'll let you know right now, but. But you know what I mean? To have their little keepsake buy and take home and give us some extra money.
Yeah, I mean, I know the PTO, the Botel PTO has long admired the Coburg's PTO's sweatshirts and all their, their Cobra Coyote gear and now, of course, this year Ginger Sixth Grade Class, as you guys know, did the Icebox designs. Are you guys gonna bring back the? Yeah, next week, what I'm gonna do, I'm, it's just, it's a crazy week this week. I wanted to talk to the secretaries about which, like which T-shirt and which sweatshirt they wanna do and if they wanna, instead of doing the masks that it's selling, to do like a sticker, bumper sticker or something, you know. We have, we have water bottles.
I want a sweatshirt this week.
Yeah, well, you'll be able to get a sweatshirt. We have water bottles that we're gonna sell at the Bocheer Store, the Icebox, water bottles and masks. But I was waiting for the weather to get better because Ryan wants to just go on Saturday and I think it's. And man, like a table, I think that's also good for them to get out there and, and they can, they'll definitely get a lot of donations due, like if someone doesn't want the water bottle, they'll give them 10 bucks or something. So, we're definitely working on it. So, we do have the Icebox stuff, which is different than, you know, sort of quaint Norfolk or historical Norfolk stuff. You know, we don't have the Coburg store, I mean, that's, that's like one of the oldest continuing running general stores.
Right, but I mean, it's about Coburg. I don't mean it for, you know, we could do a, we have lots of wonderful buildings in Norfolk that we could do if we didn't choose.
Right, and I know the library all has their own stuff that they sell.
Right.
Which my neighbor, Tracy, does that much, so.
I wonder if.
The tote bags are.
The tote bags are, and the mugs.
The mugs, yeah, mugs, too.
That's why we didn't do mugs and tote bags for the Icebox stuff, because I figured.
Right, but also, how many mugs can one use? I haven't given away mugs. I mean, you know, after a while, there's only so many mugs.
I do value my Norfolk library playing cards.
Oh, yes. I do, too. I thought that was a good, right, I agree.
Yeah, I think those are, those are the Norfolk great ideas. I think, yeah, maybe we can see if we can figure out a way to make, you know, make a position in the PTO for someone who wants to take on like Botel and Norfolk merch, you know, see if we can.
And we have so many places that we could do.
And I understand I'm too late and put in my request to have the March Madness week to be one-day Botel Sweatshirt Day on a Tuesday, so I could wear my Botel sweatshirt.
Sweatshirt.
I might wear it anyway for beach day because I'll find a way to.
Then we can have another day like that. Okay, all right, well, so moving on from the PTO, looks like our next, we talked about the Board, the Board of Finance, did you wanna talk about the Board of Finance meeting at all?
We haven't met yet, so we were, the one we met last week, the, I'm sorry, the last meeting that we had here had happened just after the most recent Board of Finance meeting and I recorded on that. I, so. John wasn't there and I was hoping I did it right.
Were you recording the, and the Zoom meeting, too?
Yeah, yeah. Well, there was the Board of Finance meeting the other week with the.
Yeah.
Just that.
Yeah, so they, they, so Matt, Matt presented the town budget and he did talk about, they only mentioned of Botel is the upcoming roof for 1.2 million and the $160,000 for the old tank. He's working on the, the. Um, he's working on the, the money that they'll get back from the state. Um, the pension committee will meet on March twenty-fourth. So we won't know until then what our contribution will be. But that's the only relevant stuff that came up.
Here, remember, so thank you.
You're welcome.
I just, um, can't always remember, but thank you.
That was the Zoom meeting, but.
Okay, I don't think that we had another bag meeting, right? No bag meetings?
No, our last Board of.
Alright, so let's move on to um, new business. Um, we have one thing listed here for, uh, requests for building use.
Yeah, um, Ben made a request called us because he's involved in the basketball league. And there were several of our fourth, fifth and sixth graders that had registered for the Wins Dead League and then Wins Dead League canceled their season. Um, the town rest department was not offering basketball and Ben wanted to know if he could take the fourth, fifth and sixth graders who had registered for the Wins Dead League and just meet with them once a week for maybe a month or so in our gym, so that the kids could just shoot hoops and practice and, and get together and play. He said he would take a responsibility for supervising, for making sure masks and all of the footballs were followed. And, um, it would give the kids who had plans to play basketball an opportunity to do so. You know, from my perspective, I don't see any risk in that, I, I didn't want to, you know, give that permission without the Board being aware and approving it.
Do we have, do we have an idea of how many kids are involved in the program?
I believe he said no more than eleven.
Okay.
And he said, you know, like, the baseball season is fast approaching, he's not even sure if they'll accept the invitation, so.
Yeah.
It may, but he said it wouldn't be more than eleven.
Yeah. Well, I don't have any trouble with that, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea, I know the kids will stay masked, I know that they're playing at Regional, they're playing basketball and they're wearing masks. Does anybody else have any thoughts about that? Whether we allow that or not?
And we would not be charging a fee.
Oh, no, we wouldn't charge a fee, right, because he'll do it while, while the custodian's normally here, right, and everything, okay.
Right, it would be, it would just be Botel kids, it wouldn't be any outsiders.
It would just be Botel kids, yeah. Alright, well, I don't see any trouble with that, so if no one has any objection.
Sally, do you need a motion? Do you want a motion?
Do we need a motion? I don't know, I don't, like.
I didn't need a motion, I just wanted to make sure that you all were comfortable with that.
Right, and if it wasn't COVID time, we would not even know about, so I think, but thank you for taking that extra step. Okay, and then Sally, I thought you had something you wanted to discuss in new business?
I did. Um, and I wanted to discuss it because I certainly wouldn't wanna do it without the Board's knowledge and permission. And also I would wanna have their total backing. Um, I've always felt that Botel has lacked in its school, a history of not only the school, but the town Norfolk. And Norfolk to me, I'm prejudiced, is a very special place. And it has very special things that we are very fortunate to have. I do feel also that some people that live here don't know enough about them and don't always able to enjoy all of them. But I'd love to, some of the things I'm going to show you, I will be happy to give as a gift to Botel, as long as we take care of whatever is, I would like it either part of the history of Norfolk or part of the history of the newer schools that, that have been here. Norfolk, and also Norfolk's had so many fascinating people live here. And not just Mark Twain, who of course, I'm sorry, his house still isn't here. Um, and I would hope that some of these materials could be used by teachers or students to do units on history of Norfolk. I remember a hundred years ago, when I graduated from the eighth grade, my class, we had our graduation over at the Music Shed. For years, we had a great relationship with Yale. And, um, my talk was about the history of Norfolk. And I just don't think enough of our youngsters may be acquiring some of the fascinating things that they have. Now, some of these are, this is not old, but this is something that was done, you may have one.
I remember that, I think I was in.
Again.
But your mom has a recipe, yeah, my mom has some recipes, I've put them in our four library.
This was done as a fundraiser by the PTO, I believe, but my memory may be.
It's just had a little, that's weird.
Now, I don't want this to be anything to do with politics or religion. But the other thing that I thought of the other day was, uh, we were talking about the fundraiser coming up for the garden and all that business that we hope will be successful. Now, people put loved ones in there or students that were here, so, you know, we have a United States Senator from Norfolk, Connecticut. And I don't see anything around here that tells us. Now, I don't care whether he was a Democrat or a Republican or an independent or whatever. And please bear with me if I say, I think it'll be a few more years before we have another one from here, maybe, it's not likely. But he should be in the garden, and there should be, when I was in college, I was taking a political science course and you had to choose somebody to do a paper on. And I chose Senator Frederick Walker from Norfolk, Connecticut. Well, my professor had no idea who Senator was, so he did some research. But anyway, I did the paper. And, uh, the day I came in to give the papers, everybody had to look paper. Um, I love this one, it's not out of Norfolk, but that is hysterical. These, these are just annual reports, they get all kinds of interesting information. Of the history of Norfolk. But these are, Mrs. Boyd, like, gives, that belongs to, that, she was the famous cake maker in Norfolk. Oh, and I can't give you some of them, no idea. I opened up one of them the other day. These are just, now, if we could encase them, that tells a wonderful history. Now, I know it's about a church, but you see. Now here's, now here's a book, which includes a Norfolk resident. In here is, as a matter of fact, John Bazana. One of the early twenty pilgrims to Connecticut. Now, some of this material I got from, oh, and this one, this one I think is very special. I had never seen this one before.
We were just talking about that, look, you have a book.
Oh, great, we were just talking about it. Just be careful, just take it easy when you're doing it, because that's the only one I have of that. And some of these I acquired from Jen Stableman's sale. If anybody knows who that was, that would be our Annie's, um, aunt. And she was, she wasn't the official Norfolk historian, but she was the unofficial Norfolk historian. Now this is one of my favorites. And some of you may have seen this or have, it was put out and published by Yale University. It is a wonderful documentation of the White House in Norfolk. And they did a few of these copies, I don't know how many, for a big fundraiser. They had a number, you know, a few years ago. And I keep Norfolk memorabilia sort of on my front table and things. And several people have come in and asked me, oh, could they get one? And I said, well, I'll call Yale and see if you make a donation, you know, if you did. So they were happy to make a donation and I got them. I also asked for one for Botel School and in two weeks I will have one donated to Botel School. But I think this is wonderful. And it's Norfolk.
Well, so, I'll tell you, in the, in our curriculum meeting, Lauren was telling us that the kind of next unit to be, uh, expanded.
South Norfolk, you'll love it.
And expanded upon is the social studies unit.
Uh huh.
And so I think that this fits beautifully in there. And something I really think that our, I would love to see our Board be able to pull together would be a way to display and keep these things. And so, it's something we've talked about a, a little bit in the past about trying to figure out a way to use this room, the Hall of Flags, to, um, be a place where we could have a display case, and I think it could serve a few purposes. These sorts of like great, uh, local history, you know, could be a place for those things to be set. We also need a larger trophy case for our, you know, all of our awards, all the, all the sports awards and those sorts of things, so. I think we do, uh, great, for us to try to figure out a way that we could fund something like that. Now, probably not gonna be able to afford it in our regular budget, like that's, I don't know if that's the right spot. But if anybody knows of grants ideas or has any thoughts about ways to start fundraising for that, I would love to have everybody sort of think about that and ruminate on it, maybe we could try to talk about it next time.
The one I really wanted to show you was an early history of Norfolk, and I don't know how it didn't get in, I got boxes.
These are fantastic things, Sally, and that's a very generous offer to, uh, have them.
But I want them only given if they will be kept, you know, protected. I, I don't mind them being used at all by the administration, by, by gifted students that wanna look at, by anyone. But I don't want them, you know, just thrown in a box, just thrown in a box someplace.
Well, it's a good motivation to get our, to get the, a display case and, or that sort of, that place set up, so.
Right.
That's fantastic.
Now I also, now this is not old, but you may have one of these.
The kids would call it old.
I know, no, I know, that's true, but I had it framed. And we don't have one, to my knowledge.
I don't think so.
And I think it's ready to go and be hung out, and I, and I think I want us to make some arrangements about marking them.
That's a good idea.
Uh, marking them, they belong to this school, it can even say who gave it, I would like to do that for this reason. I would like to encourage other people to give things. And I particularly, at the dump the other day, that's my complete social life going to the dump. I met Sandy Walker, I haven't seen her in a hundred years. And I tried to talk to her about, and she was kind of surprised when I said, well, I think Senator Walker should be part of the garden and part of, in school, to know that we had a United States Senator from, like Mark Twain, like lots of the wonderful, President Obama visited Norfolk, you all know that?
Oh, yeah.
Well, he wasn't president, then he had a girlfriend in Norfolk, what? Right, now see.
Someone was talking about Michelle days.
Norfolk, Norfolk has so many stories, it's unbelievable. And so, all I'm saying is, we need to capture some of those, but I would like to say, if we're encouraging other people to give, who gave it and that it's a property of this school and, and taken care of.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
That's all.
It would be really nice, I think, too, Gordon was mentioning, like how we could try to build a relationship with the, uh, with the Historical Society and, you know, keep that bridge open, have that way to share this space, you know, in a more, in a substantive way with other members of the community, you know, and it's such, it's a community building, you know.
Thank you for bringing that up, because the one thing I want to mention, when I went to this sale, they were very good, the family, uh, they had an only child, uh, the Gaylman's. And he brought the Historical Society in first, okay? When I got in after Historical Society and was able to get some things, I told them, listen, I'm not selling them, I'm not doing anything. I wanna do this for Botel School. They're happy, yeah, so that's.
That's, that's great, lovely.
I think maybe if we have like the Junior Historical Society or something, like.
Yeah, that's great, that's perfect.
Let's get it, yeah. And have the kids learn how to, like, get the evidence and explore it and evaluate it, like how.
And learn to curate, curate it appropriately, too.
You know, as a lens of the story.
Right, and I'll tell you, the only reason I didn't finish my study about Senator Walker in school, in college, when I walked into the room to present my paper, everybody else had a paper, you know, this thing. And mine was only this thing. And professors sort of looked, you know, a little. And he said, you know, you know, two weeks later or whatever, we got the papers back. And I got an A. And he said, boy, did I doubt you. He said, I searched and searched and searched and couldn't find the material that you found. Where on earth did you get it? I said, the family. The parents, the children of Senator Walker were kind enough, they loaned me buckets and buckets and buckets of material from which I was able to do that paper. So they have a lot of things, so I'm gonna have a meeting with Sandy and see if she, you know, maybe she'd make us a few copies or something, or do, you know, I'm sure she would, they're lovely people and I can't imagine they would, they wouldn't.
Yeah, and, you know, the specialness and value of seeing these sort of original pieces is really impactful.
Right.
Great, well, thank you very much, Sally, I think that that'll be.
And it's a project, it's a long-term project, this is a thing to do.
So exciting, I think it's so exciting.
I think it is too, and I think it'll be great for this one, and I think aesthetically, it'll be wonderful. In a lot of ways, I think it'll be wonderful. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for sharing all those things. Okay, um, well, so I think we've now completed our agenda, so, uh, if there's nothing else, oh, I would like to say, thank you for the sweet little.
Thank you.
You've already eaten, don't you?
They're so sweet.
Well, I will tell you, I was, um, invited to participate in a fundraiser that Jen, um, sponsored, she did a fundraiser. And Leslie Rock, uh, uh, local artist and this lovely, lovely woman was, uh, presenting this paper craft fundraiser. And I, I got a visit call and ended up like investing quite a bit in fundraising card. And Saturday morning was like a gray, rainy day and I thought, well, I should take out all these coins that I've got and play with them, so it was kind of hot. And she's gonna do another fundraiser, I think, it's a part of the PTO, and it, it was a wonderful couple hours to, to do it. If you get invited to do the next one, I'm trying to recommend that you participate.
Nice, well, thank you, yes, I, Ginger and I were both at the Leslie Rock.
Yes, it was so much fun.
It was so much fun.
I used my stamps.
Excellent, lots of that.
Well, if you wanna come over and play at my, I have the rock and the box machine, I have the score, I have the paper trimmer. I have sixty million packets of divine weight. All sitting in plastic and subtle and.
Wow, so you like, you were like, a final seeker, you're all in.
It is a sickness, it's like a protective machine in my body, but I had a lot of fun.
Great, well, thank, thank you very much, thank you for sharing those with us. Okay, well, so I think we're all done, if there anyone would like to make a motion for adjournment?
Well, you can adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second, all those in favor? Okay, thank you very much, have a nice night.